Okay, for Wednesday night, we have to approve the minutes for the meeting of May 21st, 2014. Under communications, we have a use of facilities request. Request number one from the Dunmore High School music boosters for the football stand, monthly meetings, and a few other things that they do throughout the year. Request from Jack Quinn. He will be a senior next year to do a senior project for a tennis clinic using their tennis courts for students ages eight to thirteen. It'll be supervised by Mr. Chris Phillips, our tennis coach.
When are they done that?
June 23rd through Thursday, June 26th.
Thank you.
That's next week. We have a request from Mr. Phillips, our soccer coach, for the outside soccer facilities for a clinic on June 29th from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Members of the varsity soccer team will put on the clinic with younger kids. We have a request from Nicole Zawiki, our music department head and band director. Every other year, Dunmore High School marching band hosts the cavalcade of bands. Okay, that's when they have five or six or seven bands from across the area, and each year, every other year, we host it. So they come down here, they have a night where they just have all the bands play. It's a very nice night. We have a request from Tony Lasik Toso for summer conditioning for the boys. We have a request from Vince Fedor, the cross-country coach, to conduct a summer conditioning program for students. Especially, all students in Dunmore School District are welcome, especially cross-country team members. It'll consist of running, technique work, strength, and flexibility goals. We have a request from Coach Henszis for the summer conditioning and weightlifting program, and also in addition, you know, he used the cafeteria for the summer football program. He put that in here. He doesn't have to put that in here, but he always has the luncheon for them. We have a request from Zach Piercy. He is an aspiring playwright. He wants to attend at Dunmore. He's writing today to request the use of the Dunmore High School auditorium for an original musical written in partnership with Alec Gertschman, a recent alumnus, and performed in part by several members of Dunmore High School Crimson Company, both past and present. They would like to perform the musical on July 18th through the 20th with Friday and Saturday shows at 7:00, and a Sunday matinee at 2:00. They will also need the auditorium for rehearsals throughout June and July, and he has listed a number of days. The musical will be a parody of the classic movie Back to the Future and the hit sci-fi series Doctor Who. There will be no charge for any admittance to this play because it's in their Fair Use Act. They cannot charge because they're taking parts of other plays. So there's not going to be any charge for anyone who attends there. And he has a list of dates. Now, he had them at night. I told him if it were approved, that the dates would have to be in the afternoon when there's people here on duty. Otherwise, they would have to pay custodian every night, which, you know, they have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, about 13, 14 days of practice. So they're asking to use the auditorium for a play that he has written, and Alex Gertschman and all the other members are former or current members of our, of our current drama club, I believe, Zach, Sal. I think mostly of them are current or former members, Megan, Abby, so there's a bunch of them. So what are your thoughts on that?
Is Mr. McGurl involved with this?
Uh, he said he can't make it down here every night for all the, every day for all the rehearsals. It's just them. I told him they have to, we're open during the day every day so that he could, you know, we would have him get there, but he has to leave when our custodians leave.
Rick, do you got his place, insurance coverage and everything?
Well, they don't have, there's no group name. They don't have insurance.
What happens if somebody gets hurt?
Uh, it's, I don't know. It's a question.
That's what I'm saying, you know, do we have to pick up the tab then?
What's going to stop them from going throughout the school?
Well, I think they're all a bunch of great kids. I don't think that would be, they're going to have Alec Gertschman, who's a graduate and a very, really good kid. I think they would, and all the kids in there, they're all pretty good kids, so.
What about the insurance?
Do you have any answer on that, insurance? They don't have insurance. This is a group of students, current and former. They want, they wrote their own musical. They want to have a play here. They want to practice here and have a play. And I told them about the insurance. They do not have insurance. I don't know where they can get insurance.
Well, they could probably get insurance. They'd have to kind of.
How about one to have in the play? Is that going to be at night or during the day?
Two nights, Friday and Saturday night, and Sunday matinee. Be no charge.
You have to have janitors here.
I told them that.
It costs money.
I told them.
They have their insurance.
They'll pay for that with janitors.
And they want, they want to practice for a month.
See, the problem is now, they have no organization. You're letting a group use the facility with, you know, where does it stop then? We let everybody who wants to run the program just use the facility? I think you have to have insurance coverage, and there has to be some kind of an organization. Legally, you know, I don't know how I would enforce if they, if they created any damage, whether it's their fault or somebody else's fault. I don't know how I'd ever be able to collect it because they don't have an organization nor do they have any insurance. They're just a group of individuals, you know? Somebody want to guarantee it? Maybe they could get a sponsor to guarantee any damages or something if they can't get insurance, but just to let somebody, a group of unrelated individuals put on a show and use our facility, I don't think that's a good idea from a legal standpoint. I just, you know, if something were to happen, we have a lot of sophisticated equipment up there too, and if something got damaged, where am I ever going to collect the replacement cost?
Okay. So he'll call me tomorrow. I happen to see him at church on Sunday, and he was going to come to the meeting on Wednesday, so just call me and I'll let you know whether it's approved or not. He may show up to me, and I'll say, you need to have an organization name, and you have to have insurance. Is that fair?
Is a fireman necessary to come to these events or?
I, depends on how many people they get. That may be part of it too. I think I told them.
Yeah, we did tell them.
Yeah, we told them firemen too.
Yeah, that would be at the shelves, not at the practice.
Yeah, we told them.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, we did tell them that.
But they're going to pay for the janitors, but they're not charging anything?
They can't charge under the Fair Use Act because they're taking parts of other plays?
Maybe donations, maybe donations.
Maybe donations, but they cannot charge.
To cover those expenses.
Yeah, they can't charge. So when he calls tomorrow, says you have to have an organization name and insurance, and that would be okay then?
Then there will be cost for the nights because we can't pay for janitors and firemen for him.
No, no, he was told that, that they have to pay the cost of the custodians and the firemen.
They have to set a limit of liability on a dollar.
Have they got a club for them or something? You're going to have to get it upfront too. It's not going to be something that we're going to bill them for. Because again, I don't have anything to collect against.
Right. So when he calls me, I'll say it's not approved unless these terms are met.
Yes.
We have requests from Sergeant Walters for the Army Reserve, and I think he just did that the other day. They always take two or three guys, and they have to go through certain trainings. They have a two-mile run out here. He takes two at a time, and they do run the track. I don't think we have to do much more than that. And these grant and prep requests for the football game, they have agreed to pay, well, the rental fee that we're asking. They've agreed to let all of the senior citizens in with their passes, and they agreed to let the faculty members in with their passes, and the rental fee will be $3,000, and they pay all the costs. So I think that's a pretty, pretty good deal. Okay?
Rick, one question.
Yes.
That ESPN thing, the football, it was supposed to be around this time, or is it in July? Is that still on?
The?
Remember that quarterbacks, the?
Matt McGloin camp?
Yeah, is that still on?
I don't think so.
Remember ESPN was supposed to come in here?
Yeah, I think that he could not honor the commitment because of the schedule.
Okay. So that's off then?
I'm not 100% sure before you write that, Kyle. I'm not 100% sure that's off, but they kind of said, they called me two weeks ago and they said, you know, I don't think Mr. McGloin is going to be able to make that. He's checking his schedule, so I didn't get great vibes on it, but I'm not 100% sure. Right now, if he comes, and we did approve that. And then we had a request for a junior high soccer program a number of weeks ago.
Yeah.
I don't know where we're at.
Have we gotten, I mean, we probably get back on with some cost estimates?
We did get the cost estimates, about $7,000 for the first year. That includes the uniform purchases in the first year. After that, it would be about $5,000.
Now, is scheduling a problem in the fall?
I don't think they, I'm pretty sure they cannot get in for next year. Pretty sure.
Are we looking to make a decision on this now, or you want to have more discussion on it? Is this for discussion, or what are we doing?
I don't know what you want to do. If you don't want to make a decision on it, I think someone will be there.
Is all, is all the information gathered?
Yes.
Do we tell the parents where the games are going to be played?
We haven't told them that. I don't know if we did.
We think they should.
I don't know that we can get into league for next year, to be honest with you.
Well, if we do get to league, we should tell them what time, what approximate time they're going to get back from, from a match, or, you call it a game or you call it a match?
Soccer match. Soccer game, soccer match, I don't know.
We should, we should put out a little letter for that, to that effect, I think, before we go any further. Because if I had a seventh grader, I don't know if I want my daughter or my son to get home at 10:30 at night. Because if you're going to be, I don't know how long soccer takes, I don't know what time you're going to start playing. But I know here, we'd be leaving meetings here, and the soccer game's still going on.
Those are varsity ones.
I'd play at Dunbar Valley, get home at 10:30.
These are after school.
Screwed over them.
Do they play?
We should get that information.
Seven teams, one team? I can't remember. Was it one team, seven and eight, or was it a seventeen?
If it's like basketball, there's two separate teams.
Right, that's why I don't remember, if it's one team or two.
And then they go on the same bus?
Yes, usually.
On an away game?
All right, so you need more information, what are you saying?
Yeah.
If we were going to expand an educational program, I might be all for that, but I don't know about anything else. You know, we have raising taxes. I don't know whether we should be expanding athletic programs.
I agree with you, but.
And I'm interested in knowing what the schedule is going to come, it's not going to be for next year, but do we have to hire a few more teachers? Could get a lot of educational expenses. I don't know about this.
Is there, is there anybody else interested in spending money on junior high soccer, knowing what Bob just said about raising our taxes and what it's going to be going forward? If he's not interested spending the money out, why should we waste any more time?
It's not a lot of money, but I just don't like.
Well, after a couple of years.
Yeah, I don't like.
My only concern is, are we pointing out this young soccer team versus the other sports? Do they have seventh and eighth grade?
What are the seventh and eighth grade sports do we have? Is that what you want to know?
Yeah.
What do we have?
Basketball.
I think we have basketball.
Girls and boys basketball.
Softball, right?
Junior high softball.
Softball, football. So we don't have seventh and eighth.
No, we don't have seventh and eighth.
It's freshman football, right, it's freshman football.
But they can play?
They can play. They can play that. We have junior high soccer, or, I'm sorry, track.
Matt, Matt, does that, does that, put that on the, title nine?
And cross country.
No. The only title nine is if you're discriminating against females or sexual discrimination. These seventh and eighth graders can't play on our soccer, current soccer programs now?
No, because we don't have like a freshman soccer program. I think if they were, the seventh, eighth, and ninth could play. I think we just have a ninth through 12 program.
My only fear is you're going to get involved in this, and the parents are going to realize their children aren't coming home until 11 o'clock at night or 10:30 at night, and they're going to say, this isn't for you. You know, we're not going to do it.
We have to know if the games are at four or at six. I mean, a lot of the junior high sports start at four, but I don't know how that would work. We're busing and all that. I guess we'd have to get that information. But like, the party starts at six, so I mean.
Varsity games are at six, that's what they're, these games would have to be.
I have to ask you a question. So we're going to get more information on the soccer.
Yep.
We want more information on there. Because I was going to find out for sure if there was interest in spending the money. Hopefully we'll get more information, then we'll go from there. I might, Matt, are we setting a precedent, like, what if a group of ex-baseball players want to play baseball on our field, or football players?
What, in terms of what?
Setting precedent, we want next, or, ex-graduates.
For the, play?
Ex-graduates using the auditorium, so.
It's like anything else, once you start where you stop.
You know, a bunch of football players are going to say, it's okay for us to play football there on Thanksgiving or something.
They'd have to ask for permission. I mean, it's not like they're, but obviously, once you start allowing groups to use it that don't have a body or an insurance program or anything like that, and how, what groups don't elect users? And how do you stop? Are you able to find out whether he can meet those requirements for our Wednesday evening? Chances are he can't do it, I would.
Um, I don't know if he will be able to. I'll ask him tomorrow to see if he can get news by Wednesday, and we'll take it from there. I think it's a nice project.
Couldn't it be done after, I mean, a phone survey or?
We can do a phone survey afterwards. You know, we're, we're going to have a budget meeting two weeks from now. We have another budget meeting, so.
We have to decide on that.
So I'll ask him to get all the information, and they may show up at the meeting Wednesday, you know, just to ask, you know. I told him, call me first to see where I am. So I expect a call from him tomorrow.
Can I help him with the soccer program, or the potential soccer program? If, if we are going to be in favor of this, I mean, we'd have to act on this pretty soon, yeah?
I don't think they get in the league for next year. I don't think so. I will find out one more time. I had to let them know about two weeks ago, can they get in the league?
I thought, I thought they said that we weren't eligible because of the two-year cycle of the schedule, and it was going to be like a?
Yeah, one team dropped out.
Like a next, oh, I wasn't aware of that.
One team dropped out.
Who dropped out?
Not sure if it was Riverside or Valley View. Not sure.
Why did, do you know why they dropped out? Can you find out why they dropped out for us?
I'll ask Mr. Holland.
I remember on the news last week, and I wasn't going to bring this up when I have to, St. Clair School District cut so many things that, I was laying down, I jumped up to make sure I was listening correctly. They, they, they furloughed 12 teachers. They went from all-day kindergarten to half-day kindergarten, which I think is a travesty. They, their art, art and music programs, and I think.
Foreign languages.
Foreign languages.
Lots of, lots of.
Old met program.
They were cut back.
They, they cut them, or they cut them back. We're looking at that in three years, fellas. We're going to be broke in three years, that's what, that's what the head bean counter tells us. So we've got to really be careful where the nickels and dimes go, because they all add up to dollars.
Okay, so I'll get more information on that. On their personnel, we have to accept the personnel reports. Accept a letter of resignation from Colin Ross as the junior high softball coach. Accept a letter of resignation from Michael Malley as the gifted teacher. Accept a letter of resignation from Mary Gabala as a substitute teacher color.
Just a question, we saw that article Sunday about the substitutes?
For the 30 hours?
Yeah.
Yes, I, yes, that's, it's a problem. I had to, that's been going to some business manager meeting on it. They're not allowed over 30 hours a week, but less. If they are, then you have to start paying them benefits. But there's so many different scenarios that, you know, we just had a person finish five weeks for, in the English department upstairs, so is it an average? We don't.
Yeah, I think there's like a measurement period that you set from August to whatever, and you average it over those weeks, but I don't know.
In that case, you can't have an English teacher come in and tell them, we only need you four days a week, and then get another one in, they're in for five weeks for the same person.
Could you change the hours during the day for subs that come in later and leave earlier?
I don't think when you have a full day at school, I don't think.
Choose in for persons out of the league. They're lost, they're out of money.
I mean, you're going to have to look at structuring something that.
Well, what, what the districts are thinking about is trying to do just that, only make, you know, don't sub more than five days, four days a week. And sharing, like saying, but that's bad continuity for the kids. If you have somebody in on a long term, okay, you have four days, and then every Friday you give them a different one.
I'm just wondering if you can't make their schedules different from regular teacher schedules so that they're only teaching, you know, six hours a day, five days a week.
But if they're in on a long term, they, they have a duty and a, they're covering that person's other schedule. You know what I mean?
I'm just wondering about how you could shift that around.
Yeah.
Perhaps you'll pick it up with somebody else, but you're going to have to look at, you can't afford to have part-time people with benefits. I mean, it's just even trying to manage that.
Well, sure, what's about two, two, and then a half-day's age for a substitute?
Whatever you have to do. We can't afford to have 40 subs with benefits. The benefits, they're costing, what do they cost enough per?
Well, you could offer a different plan, like a lower plan, but still, $6,000, $5,000, still, it's a, it's a lot of money that we don't want to.
There's also a penalty, like, if you don't offer.
Right, but that gets worse, I mean, it's not so bad for sure, but then that gets worse because it's not on the people. It's on the number of employees you have, so many thousand times the number of employees, not just on the people that you, you know, that you're not insuring, it's on your total employees. So, yeah, that gets to be a real problem.
I don't know how you would get around it with, you know, long-term substitutes out there now. You know, if they go 90 days, they automatically get benefits now anyway, okay? But if a person's out 60 days, you have to have a person come in for them, 60 days.
We should set up a group, somebody to study that.
We have that to aim a candor, and they, they're kind of on the, on the rules, you know, they help with that, so.
I think they're going to get a lot of.
And it's every, I mean, it's just us, again.
Yeah, that was the one you gave.
You just can't wait until January, you know, until, it'll be way too late, you've got to get out of there.
There's things that's kicking in, that you have to pay a dollar per member. That's coming up in July, so that'll be smaller class, but then the one in January, you have to have is.
This is for the regular?
The regular one is, and it's by member, it's not by employee. So if you have five people in your family, that's, each member is costing money.
For regular boys. That's part of the volunteer.
I mean, we're fortunate that we.
There's two, there's two of them.
That we, we give benefits to everybody.
Yes, there are some that.
We at least do that, not, like, some places don't give their aides or their school employees other than their teachers, and they're really, they're going to pay benefits or, or have to pay penalties, but we're fortunate in that case that we don't have that problem. We really just have the sub problem.
How many long-term subs do we actually have?
Two.
Depends if someone gets sick or.
Yeah, I mean, on average, it's not like we have 10, like, you know, go up to the two, three people.
No, it's not. You also ask, when somebody goes out on maternity leave or something like that, you could kick in that 30-hour, you know, too.
Plus, we have people that are just our regular subs that are probably here just about every day.
Four or five days.
Floating subs that are here a lot.
That will have to try.
Yeah. In case we'll have to dig into that.
Yeah, it's, it's going to be like a record-keeping problem too, if you really tried to get down to it.
Here's a question I was asked.
Now we're going to need a new sub caller, huh?
Yes, we do.
If a person has insurance through their husband, do they get medical coverage? There are subs and they're, but they have insurance through their husband, they don't need coverage.
They could sign.
Or if they're paying their own, where do they stand? Are they entitled? I don't need to.
No, there's a lot of unanswered questions. That's why these articles are appearing in newspapers, because there's a lot of unanswered questions, and you're going to have a lot of cases where each one's uniquely different. They're just going to be, you know, whether it's a six-week leave or a 10-week leave or, you know, or someone doesn't, you only have, can only find a certified person in a certain area. There's going to be a lot of questions to be answered there. This is, I think, an unintended result of this.
Even the time that you're going to measure their hours, it's different, but whatever you do, you have to do it for, consistently.
Yeah, I think there's an average, they can do an average.
And you have to do it for, if you're going, whatever way you pick, you've got to do it that way. You can't pick and choose and say the next time, well, we're going to do it over six weeks, whatever.
Right.
But it starts on July 1st of this year.
Right. Well, we will, Anton and I will take a look, very hard look at this.
The Times article, got a lot of people thinking about this.
It was a big article, well, the Pittsburgh Post-Gazette or whatever, from Allegheny County out there, and all having the same questions. Okay, then we'll have to appoint a swim coach, it said that we only had one applicant. Okay, under education, Race to the Top Grant, $18,922. We have put in for that. That's a grant that I pursued a couple of years ago for the teacher effectiveness and the principal effectiveness, and we were able to document everything, and we put some in our bill to get reimbursed for, for this grant. A lot of that includes when our teachers went up to the NEIU to be trained in the common core, and there's, pays for our teacher effectiveness program, the actual computer program that we use. So that's a nice chunk of money that not every school district went after that. We did. It's $18,922. The Ready to Learn Grant, that is the grant by Governor Corbett. We're unsure of where that is at this point because they haven't passed the budget, but preliminarily, we were awarded $199,000, and he has a list of initiatives that he, for this grant that they would like you to use us for. For, one is pre-kindergarten to grade-three curriculum alignment. Often, ensuring all students are reading and doing math on target by third grade. This is the Ready to Learn Grant. Extended learning opportunities for more customized student instruction. Now, we do have that, very good after-school tutoring program, I think that might fall in there. Training.
Math books.
Math books.
New math books, seriously, buy, should cover that.
Yeah. Supplemental instruction in biology, English, language arts, and algebra, which would be tutoring, okay, which we did a little bit this year. Instructional coaches, those are literacy and math coaches. We eliminated those a couple of years ago because of budget constraints. STEM initiatives, and implementation of the state literacy plan. So there's a, a number of areas where you can use it. It doesn't mean that we would be hiring anybody additional, because, for example, the math series, we could use some of her for that, we have to double-check the guidelines. That's $199,000 that we did not have.
It is budgeted because at the time, you know, they said it was pretty certain that we would get it. Well, since, what, April and May collections for the state have been horrible, so now it's questionable. However, everybody says that it's an election year that he would never take that away, so we're hoping.
It's not finalized.
It's not final. We're hoping we get it, but you never know.
Also, on their education, which I do not have on your generous, is we see the request from our principals and our athletic director to change the extracurricular requirements of how many classes you can fail. Currently, the PAA rule is three classes, and then you cannot play in the game that week. Our staff would like to include all extracurricular people, which includes, you know, the band, the cheerleaders, not just sports, any extracurricular activities. And we want to move it to only being able to fail two. So it would increase the amount of rigor that they have to perform and increase the amount of responsibilities on the students. Because we do have students who, you know, failing three is kind of easy. You know, if you're failing three, then you're not, you know, you're not really doing a good, great job out there. So we're going to put it at two. We kind of want to, maybe for Wednesday night, have some thoughts on the board, because it has to go into our student handbook for the summer, which gets printed in a couple of weeks.
Do the coaches have their own rule? I mean, would a coach, suppose a coach wants to fail one subject?
We go by three.
Okay, I just asked.
We go, that's the PAA rule is three. So we go by three. This came from the principals. Any of the, they'd like to move it to two. They're only out for that week, and if they show improvement, then, you know, they can get back on for next week. But this would include, like, everybody, the drama club, the band, everybody, any extracurricular activities. So just think about it until Wednesday.
I have another, I want to ask something, too, like, what, on their education, I think.
I have one more thing. Also, our attendance policies. We're finding that we need to increase the requirements for attending school, okay? So we want to put in some extra guidelines for when they miss X amount of days and different consequences when, when they miss too many days. We have a policy now, but I think it needs to be tweaked and upgraded a little bit, so. Mr. Gell and Mr. Hopkins, we've met today. They're going to have something for me next week, hopefully, and it's just making sure that students are attending school like they should.
Would it also be the attendance of classes, too? You know, say somebody just doesn't like their first-period math class, and they're coming in late. Is there a requirement that they have to attend so many of those particular classes?
The, right, and now, George, you can't, it's an attendance policy for schools, so for each individual class, as they're saying, if they come in late for the first one.
Well.
Yeah, I think each teacher would have their own thoughts on that, but no, we don't have a written policy on if you miss ten biology classes, here's what happens. We don't have that.
It's our school districts, too.
I know. We're looking at, I didn't think about that part of it. We do have kids who come in late. There's no question about it.
They could be coming in late for that particular reason.
They don't like the class, right.
So I, I think it's something that the principals, again, maybe should look at, with the fact that, hey, you have to attend X amount of classes. I mean, multiply that up, five, you know, five a week times how many weeks of school.
Right.
So you have to attend a certain percent, or?
So maybe they'll have something for me for the budget meeting. But that also would have to go in the student handbook, okay?
It amazes me how a student could, in a forty-five-day quarter, miss twenty or twenty-five classes and might get a grade of ninety or ninety-five in that subject. I don't know how.
Bridge, Mr. Hallman. Bridge.
Did that happen?
Yeah.
Alright, that's all I have.
May I bring, ask?
Oh, go ahead.
Somebody acquired at the last meeting about the reading list for students in grade seven and eight. Do you know if they went home?
They're sent it out on their own website.
They were sent.
Mr. Gell will be in here shortly. You can ask him about that, but I did ask him about it today. Okay. Okay, this is Lopatka.
Finance, we have approved the payroll on May twenty-third and June sixth. Treasurer's report you have for May. List of bills for May, five hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven twenty-eight. Activity reports for May you have. Wage tax collector's reports. Wage taxes have been coming in very good, so hopefully that will offset any decrease we have in property taxes. We did get a delinquent payment from the hotel, twenty thousand dollars came through the county, so.
That's a two, that's a two-year-old bill, right?
Two-year-old bill of seventy thousand, but at least they made a payment of twenty. So they, it does show that they are starting to hopefully pay. Approved agreement with CSIU for the student accounting information system and our regular accounting software. This is with the CSIU sixteen. We used to be with NEIU nineteen. Now we're with CSIU. So this is our program. It's, we get charged fifteen dollars a student for the student information system, which is about twenty-three thousand, and we get charged about fifteen thousand for all the payroll, fund accounting, personnel, all that other software that we have. That's very much the same as last year, maybe a little increase. Renewed the legal liability policy. That is twelve thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars. I don't know if I was wrong. It went up a little bit, but they were better than, but. Went up six hundred and thirty dollars, but last year it went up sixteen hundred dollars, so I was glad that it only went up a little bit. For that, we need to renew. And what's not on here is I did also get the workers' comp policy renewal, and that I was very happy with, the slight increase of fourteen hundred dollars. We've had that one case since I started here. Been going on about four years. No, I'm not going to say the name, but we've had a case, and it's still on there, and that has been keeping our premiums up. And I think it's, is it after three years they kind of go away? So fourteen hundred dollar increase in workers' comp, I'm very happy with. So that's that fifty-seven thousand four eleven for the workers' comp. So we'll have to add that motion, because it.
And the policies are all through the PSBA?
Uh, yes. Yes, PSBA for comp, and, yes, and they are with, the agent is Calisie.
Yeah, you have to have a local agent.
A contract with tech, for technical support for physio controls. This is for our AED machines. We have seven of them, and every June or July, they come in and test them all, and it costs two thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars. I, if we're going to have the machines, I want to make sure they're, they're running right, and God forbid if anything was used. We have this contract. They check them every year, so. We like to do it in the summer. We can bring them all in here, you know, when no one's here, and they, they test them out.
How many do they have?
Seven.
Alright.
Two over there, three here, and one in the field house, and then one that's a portable one that Mari takes wherever she goes when she's training. And two of them were bought, were donated to us, so we're the only person who bought five. Approved contract with NEIU for video streaming. That's still in the classroom. It's costs eighty-two cents a student, so it costs twelve hundred and seventy-one dollars. That's through the IU, and it gives us better video capabilities in the classroom for when they're using, yeah, for teaching. And finally, I have approved a resolution for bond refinancing. I did pass out the comparison. I asked them to both give me a quote, both RBC and boning and scatter good for the exact same day, and all their fees. As you can see, the fees for RBC were fifty-three thousand, seven forty-seven, and boning and scatter good were sixty-eight thousand. So RBC was better there. And then on the debt service payments, total savings for RBC was two hundred and eleven thousand, and boning and scatter good was about one hundred and seventy-eight thousand. So I would recommend going with RBC for this. In the first year, we could save about two hundred and twelve thousand. I budgeted one fifty, just to be conservative, so hopefully the two hundred thousand will come.
At the range quarter, perhaps.
At the rate, yeah, that's the thing. That's why you don't want to, and rates change. We did the comparison on the same day to get a fair comparison, but when we actually do refinance in the fall, it could be slightly different, but, you know, it's been around a hundred ninety, two hundred thousand for this month, so that's a good thing. So we just want to refinance that. Oh, and also, after your packets went out, I did get an email with the auditor, state auditor general's report, so we would have to accept that, and that should be on your, on your desk. The only finding they had was a transportation finding. And I talked to other districts. We are not required to bid out transportation. It's a service. It's a professional service. And we, we did not bid it out the last time. They did say that we probably should do that, and next time I will. I think we have two more years left. I have to double-check. We've been with Pete's for forty years. We're very happy with their service, and their price, I think, is fair. But they did, you know, recommend that we go out and, and bid it next time, which we will. And they did, they found a calculation error. You can see the very, very last. So we did receive an overpayment of thirty-seven nine seventy-nine, which they, they've already taken that back, I think, in November, so we paid that back. Transportation, I don't know if any of you have dealt with, it is the most complicated formula I've ever seen. And I try to, I understand, and every time the auditor comes, you know, they help us out, but it is, it's a tricky calculation, so. We have to do all the buses, all the miles, all the miles with, miles without children, and back and forth, and, you know, so we will, you know, he met with us, and we know what we have to do next year, and we'll do the report. But for the next contract, we will bid that out and just see what kind of prices we can get. So that's it. And then we do have to set our budget meeting anytime after the twenty-first, we can have one. So that's why there's no budget approval on here, the no homestead, farmstead approval, like, all that, the budget transfer, setting the fund balance, that'll all be, those motions will be next week with the budget meeting. So we can do that any day next week. I am not here the twenty-sixth. I have to go to Bloomsburg orientation. But other day, we can do it during the day at twelve o'clock. It could probably take ten minutes, or if you want to do it, you know, right after work, I think, whatever's good for the majority of them.
I'm out of town the twenty-second, twenty-eight.
Okay, well, we only, we need five?
We need five people. I think last couple of years ago, we did that.
We did at noon.
Everybody was kind of, five people at noon.
If you want to pick a day, we could all get here.
Are there five people connected at noon?
Two, three.
Retirees.
No one is, I.
You're down.
That's not good for me.
That's only four.
Which day are you talking about? I'm going to Thursday.
Wednesday or Thursday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday's not good for you?
Wednesday's not good for me. Thursday's not good for me.
Ford Ranch will be.
Thursday's not good for me. Or Friday?
Friday, twenty-seventh?
Can you make it? I might be away.
I might even make it under twenty-seventh.
I could, I'll, I just, I could make it. I just.
One, two, three. I'll just eliminate either way I'm learning.
I don't want proms. I'll try. I'll try.
You don't want to do it on the thirtieth?
That's the very last day. We could do it the thirtieth.
I'll be in town on the thirtieth.
Monday, the thirtieth?
You sure we're here?
Yeah, we have to.
No, no delay, that's.
Yeah, we, we got to do it. That's the very last day. We can do it.
We'll make it on the third. Do we have to be here, be here, as well?
Didn't you do it on phone, Mr. Dixie? Didn't we have one member do it on phone last time?
Yes, we did have one member.
We could do it during, we could do it earlier than.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, if we wait till Thursday, if some emergency comes up, we might kind of, you know, we don't. I'll do it twenty-seventh?
I mean, I might be available on the phone, but not, not, I can't, I'm not driving up to Bloomsburg.
We want to be one person by phone.
So I'll be at one, two, three, four.
George, was anything?
George, you're out for Friday. Let's pay attention. I want to get this over with. Friday, you're out? Friday, I'm up, but if it was an emergency, you had to call me. What day are you good for?
Good none?
Monday, the twenty-third.
Or Monday, the twenty-third? Monday, the twenty-third.
Why don't we try that? That's first.
Who can go Monday, the twenty-third? One, two, three, four, you got it.
Yeah, let's do that.
George, you'll be fifth on the twenty-third.
And then if Mike has to be called or Dylan has one of them.
Yeah.
Okay, because we have to advertise that one, so I got to get that in the paper.
Noon.
Are you doing noon?
On his twenty-third at twelve minutes. In here. Just, we'll just have the meeting right in here. That's where we did last time, right?
We need you.
Okay.
Can you do it, Anthony?
Yes.
We're going to move to executive session then?